Okay, I want to call the committee of the whole for Monday, May 17th, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gavino?
Here.
Trustee Curtis? Trustee Lowery?
Here.
Trustee Gateley?
Here.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Nedved?
Here.
Trustee Salazar?
Here.
Anybody here for audience comments? Trustee comments? Okay, under discussion, the first item is Opus Tiff incentive request.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is a Tiff incentive request from the developer Opus for the I-88 corporate park that was recently approved by the board. As you may recall, the development is three third-party logistic buildings or warehouses distribution on the current Valley Green property, as well as a part of a property owned by Euclid Beverage. Opus is stating that they need a incentive request to make the project feasible. The incentive in front of you today is it's important to note that this is not the final draft of the incentive. This is simply a concept. In order to meet a timeline for the incentive review and the creation of the United Tiff District, we thought it was prudent to come to the board and ask that the board was comfortable with a potential incentive first to keep going down that path. And in front of you, what you'll see is that out of those three buildings, this incentive concept is only for one of the buildings. It's for the building they intend to build first. And there's a couple of options about buyback and, excuse me, payback schedules. And with that being said, I'm going to turn this over to.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and introduce Josh Bauer with Opus. He'll go ahead and start the presentation and I'll provide any supplemental information. Josh was with the Plan Commission meetings, the Village Board meetings and committee meetings, so he's familiar with the process. And although I think we were on Zoom at that time, everyone's here is familiar with that. So Josh, go ahead.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Steve. So yeah, it's good to be here. Josh Bauer, on behalf of Opus Development, I am one of the developers on the team of three industrial developers that also built 1,100 and 1,200 Orchard Gateway. So as you all recall, we've worked in the village before. We've been in front of you before to get our entitlements. Steve covered a little bit of what I plan to say. You can go to the next slide. Tried to keep this pretty brief here. The next slide is perfect. Tried to keep this brief, but got a site plan here in a couple of pages. But two-phase, three-building industrial project that includes the redevelopment of the 60-acre Valley Green Golf Course and a seven-acre vacant tract of land owned by Euclid Beverage. We were here back in, starting, I think, back in March or February even, and ultimately got the signed ordinance governing our special use approval on April 5th. So the property that we're here to talk about has had a number of significant development challenges for quite some time. We were made aware of it when we undertook the project and ultimately went under contract. We had heard about, you know, the past with Pazuti. And so we did a significant amount of testing, environmental, geotechnical, to really understand what was going to be involved with the property. So I listed just the four biggest things here. The geotechnical issues, there's a significant amount of organic materials that make it not so suitable for construction. So what we have to do is pick up a lot of those materials and lime them, which is quite costly. As far as the environmental issues go, there were some environmental issues that were above the IEP levels back prior to Opus undertaking this project. And we've since gotten it on to a point where they're actually under IEP levels, but they're still very strict on the soil management. So due to the significant amount of topsoil that's on the property, we actually have to bury a lot of that. We can't haul it off, which is a significant cost and a large part of, you know, the Tiff request that we're making. Challenging access. I know you're all familiar with the Euclid parcel that's going to be required ultimately. We've got three buildings here, so we've had to really beef up our ingress egress road, make it very wide so that it could accommodate all of the different buildings and different tenants that are ultimately going to be utilizing the project. Go to the next slide. Thanks. Just an aerial of the project. I know you're all familiar with it, but I threw this in there. And then on the next slide, took a good look at the redevelopment agreement that was put together by TSCA and a lot of hard work with staff and just identified that this, you know, this project is located in the United Tiff District and is something that's been earmarked for redevelopment for quite some time now. Site plan. We worked hard on this with staff and with the board. Ultimately, I think the biggest thing that we all tried to get comfortable with was all of the landscaping on the north side. We feel like we've got a really good, exciting project here. And it, you know, now ultimately coming down to Tom to the Tiff. A little bit on the project financing, just to give you a background. Opus is the lead developer on the project. Due to the size of the project, we joint venture with an equity partner on this project. So we'll put 10% of the equity into it and our partner will put 90% in and then ultimately get construction loan for 60% of the total project cost. Our partner has conditioned their agreement to partner with Opus on the Tiff request and the Tiff payback. It's a very thin deal here, so this is obviously very critical. We received our approvals back in April, but have been unable to start construction because the importance of the Tiff request is really a make or break for this project. A little bit on the project timeline on the next slide. As I said, the timeline's critical. We get to a point where we're up against the winter. So, you know, we're looking at a July groundbreaking here and critical that we can begin the earthwork in July to try to get all of the foundations and the earthwork done before the freeze. We've got a May 2022 construction completion contemplated and then 18 months to stabilize. So the actual Tiff request, we're here obviously making our request, but also clearly significant is going to be that the village adopts the United Tiff District 23-year extension. Our request amount of $3,931,420 does not include all of the Tiff eligible expenses for the property. We've tried to really only include the expenses that make this, you know, significantly above standard. And we've tried to do that also because this is the amount that gets us to the finish line. We're not looking for a subsidy. We're looking to get this project out of the ground. So we've asked for exactly the amount of money that we need based on the underwriting. It's a pay-as-you-go Tiff, so it's not something that's funded by the village on a, you know, front-funded. The increment that we generate is what we're asking for to be paid back. Once that increment is paid back, 100% of the increment then goes to the village. The one thing that Mike and I talked about, just with the interest, the Tiff request is made up of $3,931,420. $132,000 of that is interest. We really tried to limit our interest, but what it is, with the $3,798,000 that we're asking for, we included 3.5% interest just for that first year, which gives us the $132,847. If there's any follow-up questions on that, I'm happy to answer it once I'm done here.
I have a question. What is the interest payment for?
It's, so with the developer front funding, the Tiff, we are going to have a lot of money out there paying for these costs. And instead of, traditionally, you'd earn money on your equity. Our money is going to be sitting out there and we're not going to be earning any equity. So originally, when we put our request together.
But you're the one taking the risk. Why should we have to pay the interest on money that you are, you're going to have an asset at the end of it?
We're taking, yeah, we're taking a lot of risks by funding all of these redevelopment costs in order to generate a large increment. So, you know, originally, we had a million dollars of interest, which are Tiff eligible costs. We've since scaled that all the way back down. We've only asked for $132,000. Not, you know, the grand scheme of things, I think, I think there's a million total in the bucket, but it's, we're just not earning anything out of our money. We're taking a significant amount of risk to generate this huge increment. So that's just traditional for a developer-funded, you know, Tiff request on a pay-as-you-go basis. Other than that, you know, the goal here is ultimately to get the board comfortable answers, any questions that you might have, and then get, you know, get started on a Tiff agreement document, knowing how critical the timeline is.
What is the, what is the total cost of the project?
Building B, it's. My model here, but I believe that building B is around. I don't want to misspeak, but it's, I know we're planning to spend upwards of $50 million on the, you know.
I'm good with the Tiff.
Yeah, I want to add a few things too. Statutorily, the Tiff does allow for interest payments. It's not unheard of. I think it allows 30% of the 36 months of interest, which we did verify with TSCA. As Josh noted, I believe the United Tiff District does include an actual million dollars for interest costs incurred by developers, so that would be in the future Tiff budget. This concept may be new to the board, but it's not, it's not new to staff by the means of, you know, in my time here, my eight years, I know prior to my time, every time someone's been approached the village for Valley Green Golf Course development, there's always been this discussion revolving the Tiff. The Valley Green Golf Course was added to the Tiff District, throughout 31 Tiff District in 2009. So again, there were some assumptions there that the Tiff was going to help subsidize development of the property. And if you can imagine too, some of those absorbent costs include, you know, developing on land that was once used for recreation may not be always suitable for development. Also too, the property is kind of on an island. So we've always had to, you know, sort of solve the puzzle on how to get traffic vehicles to the site. You know, there's been discussions about extending poplar, looking at Route 31 asymmetrical realignment. So some of the Tiff requests we've heard have been, you know, several millions of dollars. So this one is sort of on line or in the lower end of the spectrum with what we've discussed in the past. You know, so that's basically all it is. There's been, if you look, we provided a nice narrative that kind of goes through everything. There is no set schedule or deadline at this point. We're timeline with regard to the payback of the percentage. We included two payback schedules, one being 90% of the increment generated just for building B. And we had asked for another one at 75%, just showing the payback schedule and what that looks like. And if you look on page six of the actual narrative that was provided by Opus, you'll see that the, I think there's a nine-year timeline payback for 90% and then a 75% payback or 10 years on 75%. And I think Steve alluded to this earlier is that we're just wanting to get the board familiar with the concept. What we'd have to do is draft a Tiff agreement that really sort of gets into the minutia and the detail of the Tiff agreement itself, meaning the percentage of payback. Everything that might involve, if there is any sort of clause that says a building has to be delivered by a certain time. You know, we've discussed, you know, sort of incentivizing the building A development by going to different percentages through building B. So what we'll do is we'll go back after we receive board comment feedback and draft a Tiff agreement to bring back to the village board for further review and comment.
Does this preclude them from coming back for building A?
It doesn't preclude them from coming back from anything, but anything they do come back with would be subject to a full separate analysis and a full separate board approval. So it wouldn't be, it would not be addressed in this, but we would bring forward, would only involve building B, you know, as indicated in here. And there could also be language written into the Tiff agreement that might, that might speak to the development of their buildings. Maybe it's not A, but maybe it's C. C has the same challenges that B does, but we have not had any further discussion that additional incentive is needed for building C at this point. But it could be a possibility for the future, but subject to separate analysis.
And I can say, building A, we will not be making a Tiff request on because that'll be being constructed at the same time as building B. We know everything we need to know about the site. So nothing with A. As Mike said, if we were to come back for C, which we have no, you know, we don't plan to right now, but we'd have to come back and make a request and with the understanding that you could very well say no at that point. We've already given you $3.9 million.
I felt that Opus has been a good neighbor to North Aurora and they've built their projects equal B and done a good job as far as I'm concerned. And the small request of the Tiff for the initial investment, I think is fair.
I have a question, Mike. What is the current funding level in the Tiff District? How much do we have?
The reserve level or the actual level, the increment?
The actual amount we have in the, in the fund.
$45 million.
Thank you. At what point would the Tiff become active and how much would the first draw be?
The, the way it would usually work with something like this is that in the agreement, it would stipulate when payment would actually commence. Typically, it's upon occupancy of the building. You know, once they've gone through the full building permit process, all the permits have been approved and they, they're occupying the building to some extent, not necessarily with a tenant, but that they've received occupancy from the village or a sign-off from the community development department and building department that the building is complete. So there's, I think there's a two-year lag too with between when the Tiff would be adopted, when the actual property would be. So if you figure their 2022 anticipated timeline for completion, it would go live after the building would actually be assessed at a certain point.
I think that the 75% scenario is more palatable for the village. I mean, it's one extra year, but in those years, the village gets a bigger portion. So I'd be okay with it under the 75% scenario.
Trustee Nedved, any comment?
My only question would be, where do we stand with the adopting of that United Tiff District at this point?
Yeah, good question. So we actually have on Friday, we kick off the Joint Review Board meeting, which is the taxing districts that are involved in, you know, that are in the actual Tiff district where we'll come in, get feedback, actually take votes on draft ordinances. So actually, the actual, the biggest steps is actually going to start Friday. Anticipated completion would be July 19th Village Board meeting.
I feel in favor of the project. If there was just one question I wanted clarity about is the cost that you are talking about for the soil contamination and what you have to do, that's just for the site where building B is going to be? Is that correct?
That's correct. Building A does not have any environmental contamination. So it's just for building B, but they're below regulatory levels. So we don't actually have to treat the soil or anything like that. It's just that they are above levels where we could haul it off and this site has a lot of, a lot of topsoil. So we're in a position where we cannot haul that off. We actually have to dig out lower, bury it, which makes it a unique and a challenging site.
I mean, I feel the request is reasonable. I'm in favor of it.
All right.
I'm in favor too. I think it's okay. I reviewed most of the information that was given to us last week and was concerned about the cost, but after hearing the cost of the building and all that, the overall cost of building to building, I think it's just a small part of the overall cost of the whole project. And the future revenue for the village, I think, is very attractive. So I'd be in support of approving the Tiff either at the 90% or the 75% level, either one.
Yeah, I look forward to as well. That's probably the fourth, fourth or fifth run that come in, do something there. So, and Route 31 Tiff, the United Tiff, they certainly can use them. We could use the money to do a lot of different things there, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, item two, Forest Ridge Town Home Draft Annexation, Ornet's Agreement. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is the annexation agreement for Forest Ridge, which is the proposed townhome subdivision that would be just to the west of Windstone. They've actually been to the board a couple of times at the committee of the whole level. They had Plan Commission approval in September of last year. At the last time that the board discussed it at COW, that was in January of this year, and the board recommended moving forward, they have essentially drafted an annexation agreement and Mike is going to walk us through that.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Oddly enough, this is actually my first pure annexation in my eight years here. So I got the chance to work with Attorney Adrendal and the attorney representing the developer on this project. So it was definitely interesting. What this annexation agreement does, and Steve kind of laid out the groundwork for the area and the project and the timelines, is that this is a contractual agreement with the village that sets forth some framework for the development of the property. A lot of what's contained in the actual annexation agreement itself is our code-based provisions. So basically extrapolate those specific provisions, put, draft them in an agreement, and we worked specifically with the developer and their legal representation to go through to come up with this construct of the draft agreement before you tonight. So a lot of it's, a lot of it is boilerplate, what you've seen in passing annexation agreements. You know, it sets forth timelines, sets forth the actual costs of the impact fees and building permit fees. It talks about changes to development plans. It actually would specify development plans that were, you know, viewed by the village board after Plan Commission review, which are very specific because that's always been an issue with someone concerned with development coming in and then building something else. So what this does, it would memorialize the development plans as they would be approved by the village board. Also too, that this obviously would, is just one of the steps in the process. We would still have to come back with an actual ordinance annexing the property, which I believe is subject to public hearing via newspaper. We also too have the ordinances that would approve the zoning of the property, the special use of the property on this, on all the site plans. So this is just one of the varying approvals that would be needed from the village board. But considering the length of the document, we just wanted to bring it forward for the village board for just a cursory review for any feedback and questions. Looks good. Any questions? Anybody?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item three, Aurora Area Convention and Visitor Bureau. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three on the agenda is about the Aurora Area Convention and Visitor Bureau. Discussion came up during our March 15th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Some of the board members asked about the state hotel operators' occupation tax and how that works and how the convention bureau works. So just a brief overview is that the state hotel operators' occupation tax allows villages to tax rooms up to 5%. The tax is to be used for tourism. Many municipalities use convention bureaus for tourism purposes to funnel that money to those bureaus to do the advertising for their communities. Right now, the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau is made up of 10 municipalities, all agreed to by an intergovernmental agreement. As such, 90% of the revenue that the village receives is given to the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau to use on our behalf to promote tourism and overnight stays in North Aurora. Out of the other communities, nine of the 10 have the same 3% tax. One municipality has a 5% tax in the group. And then with that being said, Executive Director Corr Carlson from the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau is going to give us an update of some of their activities.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, sir. Could you speak into the microphone better? I'm on Zoom meeting. I'm attending. Is that better? Oh, much better. Thank you.
Is it on? The mic has to be turned on, I think. There's a button on the top. Thank you. There you go.
So a quick update on our efforts on behalf of North Aurora and the recent Tourism Office, sales and marketing, and a little bit of metrics on kind of how we do what we do and how it benefits the village of North Aurora. I want to make just one quick update on the, on the, on the staff. And we do have 10 communities. We don't represent Sandwich, but we do represent Oswego. So we switched out those two about two years ago. So we do represent Oswego is one of our 10 communities and Sandwich is not. So the next slide. So really, our strategy, especially during the COVID year, was to do a little bit of a switch to kind of more of a local focus. People were not traveling. And one of our mandates from the state of Illinois and based on our tourism grances, there was a mandate against doing actual tourism marketing. The state did not want us spending our money to draw people into Illinois during COVID. They just didn't want it to happen. People weren't allowed travel. So we weren't even able to use our grant funds and local match funds to do real traditional tourism advertising. So we'd allow that switching to the local focus to at least get people who are living here in our region out and about. They know what's open, what's closed, who's doing dining, who's doing drive-up, delivery service, those kind of things. So at least we could service our local business partners so they understand and hopefully give them some benefit from the local market. And one of that is the, our discounts program, which I'll touch on a little bit later in the presentation. And then really look at retention and growth. What we saw was a lot of cancellations and postponing of events, tournaments, especially a lot of our sports and tour groups who were booked in for summer involved 2020, pushed all that stuff back. So a lot of our effort has been trying to reschedule and bring those events back to make sure they're coming back into the Aurora area and hopefully spending their tax dollars, staying in our hotels, shopping and dining and doing all the, all the visitor services that we expected them to do. The marketing. So, you know, obviously we are a regional destination, but we look at each individual community as kind of a microdestination within a larger destination. So looking at North Aurora and what we've been able to accomplish over the last year or so is our social media accounts. We have some graphics here that shows how we've included North Aurora in those greater messaging about come to the Aurora area, come to the region. And this is what you can do in the region and then also in, in North Aurora specific. Our leisure travel newsletter, which goes out, we have about 4,000 consumers and our newsletter that goes out, we do a monthly e-blast. So listing everything yours to see and do there in the region, and we always want to make it a getaway. We want people to stay in the hotels. Our main messaging and target audience is that traveler 50 miles or greater away who is more likely to spend a night in the hotel room. And then of course, our Aurora Area Go Guide, which is our primary consumer marketing piece and our, our main draw for all of visitors who are coming into the area. And looking at kind of on top right-hand corner of that slide, the 12 ways to hashtag Enjoy Aurora, kind of how we would incorporate North Aurora into our overall marketing and really highlighting what is special and unique about North Aurora as part of the larger destination of the region. Next slide, please. So looking at 2020 and looking really into the first quarter of '21 as well. As we all know, 2020 was kind of a throwaway year, especially for tourism. I think anybody was hit harder than tourism when it comes to COVID, the pandemic and the business shutdowns. But we're very proud of what we were able to accomplish even during the pandemic, not only with some visitation, but certainly in reaching our audience and the local audience. So just since January 2020, events and attractions in North Aurora, we generated over 120,000 social media impressions. And this is specific to North Aurora. So these are our messages that included North Aurora specific information and messaging. So 120,000 social media impressions and then 43,000 page views at our website, which links directly to the North Aurora page on enjoyaurora.com. So through our messaging, whether it's social, digital, our email campaigns, how many of those people actually clicked through and went to the Aurora specific information on our website? 42,000 page views, which we think is a very good number considering people weren't traveling over the last year or so. And we are seeing those numbers increase drastically over the last, you know, sort of the last two months. The last two weeks, we're releasing a lot of great new interest and engagement in our marketing efforts. I'm sorry, so sales. Our ultimate goal obviously is to heads and beds, bring people into our region to stay in our hotels. The longer they stay, the more money they're going to spend, the more tax dollars they're going to leave from municipalities. A lot of what we do is how do we bring those people in on a large scale? We are not a meetings and convention destination like Chicago is or even, you know, Rosemont. We do have one of the Midwest, it really one of the US finest outdoor sports complexes in Stewart Sports Complex, which is in the Montgomery Aurora corridor down off Orchard Road. So we do a lot of sports marketing. We are out every day looking for tournaments that we can bring in and host here in the Aurora area. And really more, more preferably sports teams, soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball. We've done a lot of ultimate. We've done a lot of ultimate disc, frisbee sports, but anything that we can do to bring events into Stewart and bring in those teams who are going to stay overnight. If you ever had children in travel sports and you've probably gone away and you've played soccer and you've played hockey, you've done other things, other communities. We do the same thing. We're just bringing them here to to our region and those teams stay in our hotels. Certainly North Aurora hotels right off of eighty eight, easy access to Orchard Road and thirty one, make it ideal for the sports market. And the hotels are the right brands and the right price point for the sports marketing. So just in the last, you know, year or so, year and a quarter, we've sent out leads to our hotels, our hotel partners that would generate, if all came to fruition, over eleven thousand room nights for our region and then potential of two point six million dollars to the local economy. So that's really how we impact North Aurora and the region the most is bringing in sports tournaments. We're going to stay two or three nights in our hotels, spend money, shop, go out to dinner, entertain their kids, go to water parks and other facilities that we have here.
I I have a question on this slide. How are these metrics determined? How are you able to track a room back to the touch point of it coming from the AACVb?
It's based on the leads we send out and how many room nights those tournament directors or event sites are telling us how many rooms they need. Generally, an RFP that we send out that we respond to for an event or tournament, we have to be very specific on how many room nights they require. And we have to find those room nights within our region and include that in our RFP. So we know how many room nights they anticipate using before we even bid on an event or try to bring it here. And then and then the economy is based on how many room nights we expect to have and metrics on the spending per person per night on the room nights that we wouldn't stay booking.
Sir, I have a question. Can you illustrate or give us an illustration of how being involved with the your your organization has specifically benefited North Aurora in the past? You have many good possibilities for our future, which are very exciting and appealing. But I was just wondering if there are specific things you could list that might show the advantages of being involved?
Well, and certainly having your hotels as part of our area, they are receiving the benefits of all of our sales leads. So these these leads that are going out to hotels are only going out to our hotels that are within our search area that work with us and that ability to book those rooms, to bring in those travelers and the teams to the hotels and into North Aurora. If they're staying in North Aurora, they're probably going to eat in North Aurora, they're probably going to shop locally. They have to run out to, you know, Walgreens, Target, those kind of things. So certainly there is a a direct benefit when your hotels can book these teams directly into into their rooms. And then specifically, we have a program where we we partner back with our communities who do fund us to do some specific marketing and advertising campaigns. So we partnered with the village a couple of years ago on doing of photo shoots for a lot of your summer events, some video and and drone services also that we then pull back out of our our marketing funds to partner with the village to do some very specific marketing things just for North Aurora.
So I want to just remind my colleagues, it's a user fee. User fee is paid by the people who come from out of area to pay the three percent. So if it's a hundred dollar for a room, let's just say that's what it is. It's a three dollar fee that usually somebody from an outside of North Aurora would pay. It's helps fund or helps fund North Aurora days. Ten percent of the revenue goes back to us and it helps us. And it also markets the village and all the different things that we have to offer. And I think bringing up Stewart Field, that complex is an awesome complex. Being a past baseball person, we played there constantly. We were always looking for, we had our tournaments there. And people have to move or have to stay, they stay in North Aurora.
We've been lucky, been able to just in the last, you know, four or five years, bring a lot of events that have been going to Rockford, which has been a Midwest sports destination for years. Bring in some of those events over here to to our region and kind of pulling them back.
Actually, I think we're short hotels in Aurora area, I would say, I would think.
We are. Sometimes we struggle to to meet the minimums that we need to to bring in the event. Once we exhaust all of our local hotels, we do go outside if we need to for overflow hotel rooms in order to secure that tournament, but our hotels always take preference. And we get the number one choices for our local hotels. And kind of in that same point too, you look at, you know, how does North Aurora kind of fit into the bigger picture? We've had a lot of success. We've got a lot of really good engagement feedback. Even things like your restaurant and your dining scene is very unique to our region. It's very common. We hear it all the time. People are coming into the region, they're coming into Aurora, they may be going to Paramount to see a show and they're eating at Hardware or they're eating at Turf Room. They're looking for a dining experience that you that's unique to the region and they're choosing North Aurora for that. And without that partnership between Aurora, North Aurora, or even like Montgomery with Stewart Sports Complex, it all works together and there is a synergy there. We all need to kind of be a partner. It's one big destination, not any one town necessarily is standing alone. Whenever it works together, it creates a real dynamic and
I would say that Turf Room and Hardware are constantly busy. I mean, I just, I live close by and and I know it's working. And it's just two class restaurants we have here housed and I know they benefit from the program. So I'm in favor of keeping the program. I was never, I think it's it's worth it and and we need to stay with it. That's all.
And then and then the next slide is just kind of touches on our discount program, which we we actually developed this pre-COVID. And it was, it was really meant to be a program where we could reach those weekend travelers coming in, whether it was for a sports tournament, a motor coach tour or something where they were in town for a weekend and wanted to make sure we get them into our community to visit our restaurants. And they knew what was here and get them moving around. So we started around that time and then obviously COVID hit. So is how do we going to use the same program? So we kind of made a switch and we did introduce this then to the local economy and the local residents as well, who have an access to this program and we're pushing it out on our social media programs, our consumer e-blasts and everywhere we can to make sure that people even who live here are aware of the program. And it's been an extremely successful program.
I have a question. Do they pay to participate? Do the businesses have to pay to participate? In my opinion, and this is the way it should be done, because we're looking at private enterprises, private businesses that have marketing budgets and who are in business to make a profit. The the issue I've had with, I think you guys do a great job, but I think that if a business wants to participate, they should be using their money to participate. My ish, my issue with this whole program is that this is a tax that we are enacting on people who want to come to North Aurora and stay in a hotel. If we can get rid of a tax, because ultimately the consumer is paying for it. If we can get rid of a tax and allow our businesses to market themselves the best way they know how, because they know better. They know their clients, they know their customers.
Well, it's a user fee, so it's not really a tax. It's a fee paid by the user who uses the stay at the hotel.
They would have a competitive advantage if they could say that they not now no longer have a local tax. I'm just saying that businesses with marketing budgets know their consumer better than, you know, the the visitors bureau is going to and that we should just get, you know, stay out of the picture with this. Let the businesses that they want to participate, you know, maybe have a have a program where they can, they can opt in or pay in.
We do have a program. It's our marketing partnership program that we do offer. That's kind of put on hold with COVID. A lot of our local businesses, the small kind of mom pie restaurants and shops, this did not have the marketing funds of the past year. And that's one of the reasons why the discount program has been free of charge up till now. But in the past, we do have a marketing partnership program where local businesses can kind of buy into it. They get our basic services for free because we're funded fully through the hotel motel bed tax. But they can buy in, that includes advertising and our and our visitor guide that we do once a year. We, they can kind of buy up their program and get some very specific and specialized social media pushes. They can get some e-blasts to our consumers as well. So we do a program where they can buy into it at a little bit greater level and help offset some of our marketing costs and we can do it for them individually. Again, that was successful program. You know, we really hit a good stride in nineteen on that program. And then COVID hit and things have really kind of slowed down. But we hope then to bring that back again, once we get back on track with the economy, our businesses feel comfortable again, spending some of their own money. And I certainly would expect probably discount program having some kind of small fee attached to it, a few part of it also. But it's been hugely successful and really is a way that we could help support our local businesses during COVID. That's how.
I got a question for Steve. Are there any municipalities surrounding us that do not participate in this?
Yeah, so Batavia is a member, but I don't know where Geneva goes. St. Charles has its own convention bureau, I believe. But typically, all the hotels in our area that have a tax, I mean, state law requires that it is used to tourism. So when David did his research, he found that some of the other areas outside of the AACVb do have bureaus that they pan to.
I I have just a couple of comments. I I I understand what you're talking, talking about the competitive advantage. And when I was first singing about this, if we remove the fee and that gives our hotels a three dollar advantage supposedly, except for the fact that our whole community, every business in the community benefits from that three dollar tax as opposed to the hotels not losing anything. So their marketing budget is being done by us as a village collectively spread across.
One industry.
Well, but but I I can tell you that if we pulled out of the, what I would like to hear is, let's hear from the hotel owners in North Aurora because I I guarantee if we suggested that we were going to pull out of this deal, they would not like it because then all of a sudden they're going from a zero marketing budget to a twenty five thousand dollar a year marketing budget per hotel. And it doesn't benefit Raymondo's or Turf Room or anybody else. And it's not like the hotels paying for the benefit to Raymondo's, the user is. So it it's being collected at the hotel, but it's benefits the whole community. So I understand what you're saying. It does provide a competitive advantage to take it away. But I think the benefit outweighs the the impact, the small impact on an individual consumer. My one comment, though, that I would say is I'm sick and tired of feeling like North Aurora is in the shadow of Aurora. I don't like the name. I would love to see a change to the Fox Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau or something that is more inclusive to the nine other municipalities other than Aurora. Because it's tough enough being North Aurora where we constantly get asked the question, so you're the north side of Aurora? No, we're our own community with our own village board. So if there's any momentum before a name change, I would be all in favor of that. But I I at this point, I would agree with trustee Gateley that I think the overall benefit to the village is is much greater than the impact to the individual consumer.
I want to comment too that, you know, really no one hotel or even one community can do and have the impact that we are having. No, I know hotels are going to go out and go to a sports trade show and market a sports complex and bring in a hundred and fifty team soccer tournament to the region and spend that money on their own. We do it kind of on your behalf and really on all your behalf as a region, knowing that the more rooms we fill, the more money they're going to spend, not only in the hotel and that three percent bed tax, but there, you know, F and B taxes and sales tax and local and local shops, those kind of things as well. So no one individual can do it on a scale that we're doing it and have the same success that we're doing as a region. And really, a major benefit of what we do as a region and a certified CVB is being able to bring in some of those state tourism tax dollars to the region that no one else can do. Being certified, we're tapping into a grant program that is set aside just for, I think there's thirty nine certified CVBs throughout Illinois. We have to match those funds locally. So we do need your money to help us match those tax dollars. And this year, actually, our state grant is probably going to exceed what we would normally bring in for our our local tax support just because of COVID and the reduced budget and revenues from the hotels. So really, sharing the local funds and bringing in the state grant dollars that no one else can do is a huge benefit for the region and it really doubles our budget and and leverages your money with everybody else's.
I like to add that ten years ago, or maybe a little more, when Dale brought this up, I was in Laura's camp. I was like, oh, man, we could take that money and use it for whatever, enhancing the streetlights or bringing people in North Aurora. But as you just said, the leverage of it is we couldn't do that. The hotels can't do that. I know I brought it up last time when we discussed this too, to hear from the hotels. And I bet they would tell you that they can't do what you're doing. They're not going to bring in ball teams and Paramount and they they can't do all that, you know? And the other thing is for three bucks or three percent, whatever, I don't think I, when I go out of town, I don't look at where I can save three dollars on a hotel room. I, you just, you pick your spot and you go to, and I do like a name change myself. I just throw my two cents in there. Certainly, everything's, a lot of things are Aurora. But but the ancillary monies we get from the gas station and people run into Target and like trustee Carroll said, you know, restaurants and I mean, it just, you know, it's I would not want to have it. So I mean, I think I think it's, and I think it's improved the last five or six years. Just some of the information you're bringing and with the matrix isn't just, it's just, it's gotten better over the years since you've been there. So.
I think I agree. I completely agree. I I think that the the visitor traffic, that the increase in visitor traffic that you provide far outweighs the cost, the three dollars, three percent cost to the to the establishments, to the hotels and so forth. Not to mention, like Mark said, Mark, Mayor Gaffino said, the the added income and benefits. So I'm kind of for the whole thing. But I, again, I also agree, the name could be changed. That would be more pleasant. But that said, I think just that the overall increase in visitor traffic far outweighs the cost or any loss that we might have because of a competitive advantage or disadvantage related to the three percent tax or surcharge. I say we stay with it.
And generally, the consumer doesn't know what the taxes before they go to a hotel. And they're going to pay a six percent state tax anyway. So they're already paying six percent. And the three percent, while it's it's flexible and it's really up to you this board, how you want to handle that. We're still lower than most surrounding towns and regions. So you go to Naperville and you're paying over five percent.
It's five percent in Naperville.
I think Bowling Brook is like twelve percent. It's crazy on top of the six percent state tax. So in Chicago, obviously, you know, you're you're paying more in tax than you are in room rate these days when you're going into.
Trustee Sales there?
A good deal. And again, people don't even think about that until they're checking out. And even then, it's such a small amount that it's, it's irrelevant to most people.
I would agree with what most, you know, Mark and Mark and and Mark said about the, I think it's a negligible cost. And I'm, when I look for a hotel room, I'm looking for the one that's closest to where I'm going to stay. And while it may seem like a subsidy to the hotels, it really is the Walgreens and the gas stations and and everything. And I think that your organization fills a niche that no other you know, entity does. And so I would be in favor of keeping it as well.
What kind of total dollar amount are we talking annually is generated from this?
Well, on a good year or COVID year, what are you talking about?
Well, just on average for for the village.
At FY twenty, which was kind of like, our fiscal year is July one, so FY twenty would have been in July nineteen through June of twenty, we were at about seventy thousand dollars total investment from from the village. Year to date right now for FY twenty one, we're about thirty four thousand. So again, it's a percentage, so it's based on use. And really, the better we perform and the more business we can bring near hotels, more benefits the village and and the better we benefit as well. But so we're at probably fifty percent of what we normally would be on a good year. And even FY twenty, they included, you know, very early COVID months. I should have brought nineteen, but I didn't bring FY nineteen, but nineteen was a great year for tourists in our region.
Yeah, I, my, my kids play sports and the, they call it stay and play is what these tournaments call it. Mark, I know you're familiar with them too. Generally, if you don't stay in a partner hotel from that tournament, you're paying more. So you get a better deal in these hotel rooms, much better than a three or five dollar tax. So personally, I've seen it. And and I and I I would agree that it's worth.
So we don't want to go to Rockford or Peoria or Des Moines or Fort Wayne. We want them to come to North Aurora and our region and do the same thing that they're doing elsewhere and leave the money here.
Besides the marketing, is there anything that our local businesses can do to utilize your? utilize your service to better promote themselves that they're not doing now?
Yeah, I mean, they can always reach out to us, especially on our website, our visitor guide. We try to let everybody that we possibly can in there. Certainly when we're reaching out to our team managers, you know, the team reps who are booking the rooms and really working with us on some of those, those local details. If we can get the information out to them in advance as well, that's always helpful.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item last. North Aurora Days, May 21.
Thank you, Mayor. Item four on the agenda for the Cow discussion tonight is North Aurora Days for 2021. As the board might remember, we were back recently, the North Aurora Days Committee met in March. Obviously the guidelines were completely different back then and they've definitely got looser even today. And in April, we went back to the village board and to let them know that the North Aurora Days Committee recommended not having a full event, but that they were looking for some feedback on some options. The North Aurora Days, or excuse me, the village board asked for some, for the committee to look at some options and come back with something. So North Aurora Days Committee met on May 10th and they thought the best suggestion would be a one day event in September with a minimum standard set at bands, beer and food. So that's keep it real simple. And then what they want tonight is just feedback from the village board. And, and to go from there, what I'll do is I'll go back to North Aurora Days Committee with the committee members in June and we'll start talking about the logistics.
So September 11th is one of the dates?
They threw out, originally it was the 18th and we have a couple of backup dates where we've already reserved Island Park for parking and whatnot. So we actually have reserved the 11th, the 18th and the 25th.
18th is a good date because that's like middle of September and usually we'll have 60 degree temperatures. I think it's great. I'm fine.
I think it's better than September 11th just because that's the end of Labor Day week, which a lot of people vacation and whatnot, maybe out of town. So I think given the 18th and the 25th, it's the weather's typically a little bit nicer as well.
What do you think about the one day only? Is that good for this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
It'll be scaled down.
I think it's a good idea.
Be like a theme, like Oktoberfest or are we just going to have an event?
I don't think we want to call it North Aurora Days because people think rides and games and so we need something else.
Oktoberfest.
In September.
September. Everybody does it that way.
Septemberfest.
Everyone does it that way.
It could be unique, it could be Septemberfest instead of October.
Or Fall Fest.
If we have it on the 25th, we can call it Fall Fest, right? Because then it would be in the fall.
That's true.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll go back to the committee and we'll start putting the logistics together for the event.
Who knows? That could be, that event on that day could be a big hit, you know, if people want to do it all the time.
All right.
We're just, yes, we go into executive session.
2:15, 2021, 4:19, 2021. And to review and release any of those minutes as well. So motion adjourned.
Take a motion to go to the executive session.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.